We'll call this meeting ordered. You going to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The thing is approval of amendments on January the 17th.
I move.
Thank you Brenda. The 19th, 24th, and the 31st.
I move.
I say.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh yes. Chuck the column man.
No one signed the other card.
Next is April Rose, ATV safety.
I put a plug in for our robotics program that we have going, the science, technology, engineering, mathematics, that we have all these resources that we can bring to the county. I thought maybe you might be interested in knowing about that. The website's there, so I won't waste any of your time on that topic since it's not the topic I'm here to talk about, but I do have to bring more of that here to the county. And I have someone that's called me who is a civil engineer that did graduate from the county who's wanting to help me with this, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to bring more of that down here. I appreciate the time. I know you're busy and so I'm really glad that you took the time to let me come in and give you some information on a program that I've been working on in the schools. Okay, where's the, is there an event? Which one's the event?
Check it out. Backslipping. I don't have a clicker for my...
Oh, okay. Okay. And I didn't know if anybody was gonna be here to know me, but I always like to open the door to let people get ahold of me. I'll talk to anybody if you want to know that. ATV safety in Lincoln County. And I kinda jumped it down on this board last week by releasing some of our data, or your data, to the county commission, but I saw an opportunity and I was in the door, so I jumped. And it actually resulted in some things that I was able to accomplish for us, so I'm kinda glad that I did. So I'll ask for your forgiveness on that, but I will ask you at the end of this permission to share our data with other entities that put it in the front page of the paper. Survey population I've had has been 244 students, and I've talked with each one of the board members other than Ms. Lucas, and I apologize, we've just not been able to get our schedules to work out usually because I've backed out on you. But the information that is involved here is also contained in some of the reports that I handed to various members here. I've gone to all fifth grade classes in the county at this point at least once. It's taken me three years to do that. I wish I could get to them all quicker, but time-wise I have to kinda prioritize with my other programs and so this is where I'm standing. I like to make at least one school every semester. This is the order actually that they fall in right now on my schedule. I'm at Hamlin right now, so I'm actually repeating the cycle. I started over with a new cycle, a new three-year cycle at this point. And those are the schools that I've been to. And I'll point out some state code, 'cause I like code. Some people don't like code, but I like code. It keeps us all together on the same page. Of particular interest is these three pieces of the state code. There's only two pages, it's actually not very much, this state code, and I'll share with you that I was at a Hatfield McCoy meeting last week and individuals on that committee wrote this code. So we have a very good resource on that particular state code with that committee, and they have invited me to be a part of the meetings that they have. Actually, they asked me if I would please come back. I said, "Well, I'll change that." Now I'm joking. You can't operate an ATV in this state if you're under the age of 18 with a passenger, unless you have a driver's license. And really what this piece of code is geared toward, as far as I can tell, is to keep down the number of kids we see that are 14, 12, 10 years old riding with other kids, because that's extremely dangerous. So they set the age of 18. Now, if you're over the age of 18, you don't have to have a driver's license, but you can't have a passenger, but it has to be an ATV that's approved for a second passenger. A straddle ATV is not approved for a second passenger. Racks are not seats. I tell the kids that all the time. But we see that happen in the county. The second one here, there is a rider's safety awareness course offered through the DMV by the commissioner, and it's required for anybody under the age of 18 to have that. If they have it, the sticker would be on their helmet that they should be wearing. I would say, and I'm not surveying this, but the number of kids that have gone through that is pretty low. On the other hand, what I'll say is I called that office today and I called that phone number and asked for the guy who runs this program. I didn't get him the first try, and then I got his voicemail, and the guy that I did talk to had no clue who managed the program, so... But having said that, it is an educational program, and regardless of how well it's managed, an educational program is never anything that would be wrong. I think anytime you can offer education on this topic, it's always an option that you should take. And then here, anybody who knows, legal guardian, parent, or person who has a responsibility of child that knew or should have known that a child's riding an ATV without a helmet is guilty of a misdemeanor. Anyone under the age of 18 must wear a helmet, and if they don't, they're breaking the law and parents can be served with misdemeanor charge, or the legal guardian, or the person responsible for that child. You know, I didn't really know a lot of this until I started reading the code. That's what I like about code. You can read code and then you know a whole lot more about what the rules are. And of course, the penalties here, they're misdemeanors. A thorough offense, that's the worst one. I mean, that's the most egregious, and it goes up to $200, $500, 100 hours of community service or both, a standard for most state codes. But it's interesting and it's important to remember those things because we do see so many kids in the county riding without helmets, two children on one ATV at a time, and we tend to take for granted that that's okay to do. Well, by state law, it's not. Now enforcement, on the other hand, that's another issue, and I'm not enforcing, I'm just educating. With the stats from our survey, this is what we found out. 95% of our fifth graders have been on an ATV of the 244. 60% of them have been riding more than three years. Now, this is a self-report, so this is what they're telling me about themselves. 70% reported that their first time riding, they were either eight years old or younger. 76% were taught to ride by their parents. And these are safety riding activities that I collected from Hamlin, and I like to read these because every child has a story to tell. And this child, and I won't share names, said that when I had first, my first experience on an ATV, it felt like I knew all about how to drive one. And then goes on to relate that the mother was watching, videotaping, and making sure she had the recording so that we could show the dad. Now, is there anything wrong with that necessarily? No, but the fact that the child got on that ATV and felt like they knew how to do it all, well, it's their first time riding, but they're 12. They don't understand that they don't know how to do it all. I have a 12-year-old at home. Believe me, he thinks he knows all of it. And a lot of times, some of this training by parents and relatives is just, "Here are the keys, go ahead," and that's the extent of what these kids, I would say, think is training. So their impression of what training is and mine probably are two totally separate things. We had 105 students in this 244 sample that don't wear helmets. And if you look down here, 101 of them have been involved in an accident. Statistically, you would say, "Well, not all of those are gonna be fatalities," because statistically they won't be. But reality says that yes, they could be. And 101 students, that's a lot of students out of that small group. I'm actually issuing the same survey to the eighth graders at Hamlin this year because they represent the fifth grade that was there when I did the survey with them first, and I wanna look at the data after three years to see how much the accident rate has changed and some of the other things involved in that, just to start looking at comparisons. It'll help me actually develop my curriculum a little bit better too, I think. And we have 139 of them that report riding with a passenger. They tell me that and don't even know that it's not a good idea. They don't even know until we start talking about it. This is a page capture actually from the ATV Safety Institute, and their website's there on the top. I included that. And really, prevention's gonna come through education, because you can make all the laws in the world, but if they're not enforced, or we don't have the police agencies with enough people that can enforce it, or there are other more important things with a higher priority that need to be enforced, well, then they may not be enforced. But what we want to see are kids making choices that are right, not being forced to make choices by their parents who are under the thumb of a state code. We want them to make these educated choices on their own. So this site I put here because there's a rider training course that they can go on there and do, there's a video that they can get on there and watch, there's a lot of information included in this site. I actually went through a four-hour training trainer course with the idea that, hold on a corner just a minute. With the idea that eventually, the hope from the university is that we'll be able to set up actual riding courses, get ATVs, put kids on them, and run them through a training course to show them how to go over logs, how to traverse a hill, how to climb up and turn back around, how to back down a hill, 'cause these are the things that they find where kids and adults generally have the most kinds of accidents. So, you know, hopefully that will happen. I have a meeting tomorrow with some of the regional agents, and I'm sure we'll probably talk about that very thing. That's a good website. Here's another one that had a lot of good information, and this is more of a national website, but right now, if you just look in the corner down there... If you look in that left-hand lower corner there, it tells you that the preliminary review as of this year, there have already been six deaths from January 17th to January 30th, and one of those was a child under the age of 16. Now, that's national. Maybe not that important unless that one kid's yours, or your neighbor's kid. So, I mean, I try to put these things in perspective, but you know, when you start seeing the faces of the kids and being able to put faces with what you're doing, it tends to take on a whole different meaning. So what am I working on now with this project? I started collecting data, as I said, from the eighth grade students for the three-year follow-up, and my plan with that information is to compare the data from the fifth grade at that time in 2009, who now have that same fifth grade class, response to some of the helmet use questions, accidents. I wanna see if there's a huge increase in accidents recorded, and also whether or not we get a decrease in the number of kids riding with passengers. If not, then I need to go back to the drawing board and redirect my educational curriculum and come up with a more direct plan, but this kind of stuff will help me do that, 'cause I don't wanna go into the classroom if I'm not getting the biggest impact I want to do. And of course, like I say, I hope this will be able to direct my teaching efforts and we can work on some more, uh, more focused accident reviews. This is the Division of Motor Vehicles website. Those are locations where all the BMVs are, but there is a number in the lower right corner, two numbers actually. The fellow who runs this whole program, apparently for the whole state, named Terry Anderson. Couldn't get ahold of him today, and so I left a message for him that I wanted to speak to him, so hopefully he will give me a call back. We got some good news. I'm working on a game that I wanna play with the kids, because I don't know about you, but free state code can get boring and confusing. And so I'm working up a game called Code Master. It's more or less a true and false kind of thing, but it's a game that we play in the classroom, and I tried it at Hamlin. They always volunteer to help me test drive things and get them going. But it has a statement from the code, and then the kids have to decide true or false. If they think true, they go to one side; if they think false, they go to the other side. If they get it wrong, they have to go to court. They stay in court for a couple of questions, and they get the opportunity to answer a question and get out of court. If they get it right, they can get out and play the game. If they don't, they have to stay in court. Well, we play it to where hopefully most of the kids stay out of court, but they had a really good time with it, and one of the things I noticed is I do need to simplify some of the questions. It got confusing, but we all know state code's confusing, so I'm in the process of trying to figure out how to simplify state code down to the point where it's still accurate, but 12-year-olds can understand it, so I'll let you know how that goes. But they really found that game to be fun, and what I'm hoping to do is, is once I get it pared down to what I think is a pretty effective little game, I wanna put it together in a little kit that I can then reproduce and hand out either to counselors or other people at the school so that they can give them to their kids. I mean, it's a fun little game to play. I'm here to share, so I'm happy to do that. Actually, at the Hatfield McCoy meeting, I presented that idea and passed those around the committee, and they want me to create an app to put out there with this kind of a game on it, and I said, "Well, I don't know how to create an app, but I can find somebody who does. I won't say no, but we'll go from there. I don't mind. I would mind if I don't have it." The other thing I'm interested in was the possibility of putting together a board game with all of the Hatfield McCoy trails listed on it, and the kids play around that with questions where they have to make decisions if they have an accident. You know, if you'd had a helmet, you could've bought a helmet back here at this point, but you didn't. The penalty or the payment's gonna be more kinda like a cross between chutes and ladders and monopoly and driving some ATV safety, but I want a pattern after the trails that they have. Some of their trails are more difficult than others. They also have symbols that represent certain things. I wanna have that on that board game so they start with the recognition of those symbols so that if they ever ride that trail, they'll understand what the symbols mean. The harder trails will be harder to get through, they'll be shorter, but they may get a lot more obstacles and get kicked back, but the hope, what they'll figure out is sometimes taking the long road will get you to the finish line quicker than trying to shoot through the other way where you'd end up getting hurt more. They were very excited about that idea too, so a media fellow jumped up, made a business partner, said, "Call me." So we may be working on some things like that. Kiefer, the motorcycle ATV shop down on Route 119, Eddie Kiefer was at that meeting. He has already offered me six helmets to give away in the school's year. So I'll give away two this year, two next year, and two the following year, because I wanna space them out so that everybody gets an equal amount at each school. I'll be able to go down and get coupons for up to $100, and then the kid can go down there with a parent, the student can go down there with their parent, or their guardian or whoever, and have that size, and hopefully get them a helmet that they're gonna enjoy wearing. If the kid, student can't get down there, I'll cross that bridge when I get to it, but we'll make sure that there won't be any child if they can't have a helmet that won't get a helmet, so we'll make sure that happens. The other thing I gave you up there was a little proposal that I put together. I wanna do posters, because once I get through this cycle at Hamlin, there'll be one poster that will come out of that fifth grade class that will be the one that's the best overall. I wanna take a picture of that poster, I wanna blow it up into a colored 16 by 20, and I wanna make about 15 or 20 copies of that, and I wanna send those out all over the county. Actually, Hatfield McCoy Trail told me they hang one down there in their main building. I'm like, "Well, you got plenty of wall space. I'll send you down some of our Lincoln County kids' artwork and you can hang it on the wall." I have not gotten anybody yet to commit to those funds, but that's okay, it's more than a day. I gave those to all of you, hoping that you will find one person that you know that you could hand that to and tell them, "We're looking for sponsors for this program." And that's fine, because I don't mind giving sponsorship on anything that we do. It's a good community activity. We're working together, so anytime we can all help each other out, that's always a good opportunity to take. The other thing that I was able to get, Joe Wood out at McDonald's gave me about 60 or 70 of these things, free cheeseburgers and free ice cream, and I gave these out at Hamlin to everybody that played the Code Master game. They loved it. So, you know, and Joe didn't have to do that, I knew what I was doing, and he says, "How many do you want?" I'm like, "Well, I don't wanna be greedy, Joe, but how many do you wanna give me? Because I will ask. You know, these are my kids, and I'm gonna ask and get everything I can get." So I don't wanna appear greedy, but I'm gonna get what I can get, because I should. And he gave me these, and the Hatfield McCoy media representative gave me three season passes that expire the end of this year that I can hand out for kids to receive as a part of an award that I decide to give. The only caveat with these is that in order for them to get the free child pass, they have to purchase an adult pass, which makes sense, you shouldn't have a child out riding on a managed trail without an adult. So hopefully, we'll be able to give these to a child that will be able to participate in that. Should we have a child that cannot, we will make alternative plans somehow to reward that child for the opportunity of winning this, but we will definitely make sure we hand all of those out. So I've got people stepping up and, you know, offering to be of assistance to this program, but the whole helmet, any other funds that I get at this point will be used to buy additional helmets, purchase these posters if I can use it for that, and also to manage this program, but mostly anything that I can squeak will go to purchasing the helmets. So, you know, I want people to know that if they're gonna sponsor us and send their money to me, they can walk in anytime, look at our budgets and where the funds are going, be happy to show that, and that they're gonna go to what we need them to go to, and that's purchasing helmets, getting kids a helmet. As I said, Hatfield McCoy people, you know, that community's had a big input on writing code, so they're definitely a good source of information on that. So what are the possibilities? What can we do? What can you and, or I and you do together? I presented to them, and they asked me, "Well, what is it you want?" And I looked at them and said, "Give me three school buses and some drivers, or at least provide me three school buses and drivers. I'll take every fifth grader in the county down to the DMV and get them certified on this class." And they kinda looked at me, and I'm like, "Okay, is money that a little too much then?" But, you know, the consideration there is, you know, we can provide this course to students who would not otherwise have it. It is a requirement by law that anyone under the age of 18 go through this course. You know, if we were to do that, we could say that Lincoln County's 100% compliance with that piece of state code. And it's a proactive, positive activity to comply with the law. And at the same time, you know, get the other counties involved, issue a friendly challenge to all the other counties to see their kids do the same thing. You know, there's lots of ways that we can meet our requirements and everybody have a good time doing it and get a whole lot out of that. And then, you know, once we do that, if they wanna issue us friendly challenges, I'm sure our media outlets would be more than happy to help us get those challenges out into the public where people will see them so that others can go to their respective board members and say, "Hey, Lincoln County's issued a challenge. We can't let that go." That's fine. If it gets kids to that commitment to the DMV to pay the class, that's the key. And I'll follow up on this with Terry Anderson as far as the course goes, exactly what's involved in the course, how long does it take, what do they get out of it? Do you know they get a sticker that goes on their helmet? And I believe their name gets put into the database, but I will find out more information on that and provide it to the board at some point from today. Hopefully, within the next two weeks, I'm giving them a call back. There are a lot of opportunities here to do, and so, does anyone have any questions about anything I've said? Yes. Go ahead and follow me if you have any questions. I'm pretty much, 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 I'm pretty
Well, you're asking for him, okay.
Well, I understand. You want to be hit up.
Fred was curious.
Right.
Fred told me to say that.
Yeah, he was asking that.
But that's, that's exactly what we want to do. We need to ask questions so we can get them answered so we can do what we need to do. Absolutely, that's not a problem.
Giving off.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like to ask? If not, thank you. Oh, and I would also officially request permission from this board to use your data that I've been collecting at my discretion if that would be acceptable to you. Um, if you did some public knowledge, comments, or anything, um, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I may have, I may have copied pasted myself into the corner. Okay, I'll, I'll make sure we check that because those kinds of things are in there. Well, I don't share the comments. I'm just, I'm just sharing the data. So, but I will check that because I want to make sure I have all the comments from the right schools. I read all those too. Um, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Do I have all my cards on?
Yeah.
All right. Play the game. I'll send it back to the school. I'm going to leave it on my desk. I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, give us a video.
Next on the agenda is Minister Perry Adams. Uh, thanks for the emotion. I'm, uh, I'm, uh, pretty good. Um, now, some discussions. A is non-lagging, uh, president. B, the adult student. C, for university students. D, of Boston University, Morgan Street. U, Wall Bear.
Thank you, Nancy. This is my, uh, my, uh,
The former student, then recommendation for national state league, for public employee.